Call to order, salute to the flag. Mr. Stevens, please lead us to the salute to the flag, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Next on the agenda is election of vice chair, vice chairperson for 2018, voted on by the school committee. Is, um... Do I have any nominations? No, Ms. Craigin?
It is with enormous pleasure that I would like to nominate Mr. Pete Stevens as our vice chair.
Motion made and seconded for Mr. Pete Stevens as vice chairperson for the 2018 school year. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That is unanimous.
Thank you.
Resounding unanimous. Congratulations, thank you. Okay, school committee members and student reports. School committee chair report. I have nothing at this time. Resource committee?
Resource committee, we met on January 23rd at 10 o'clock in the morning. We had Mr. Ward Hamilton, the principal, owner of the Old Mohawk Historic Preservation, was there, and we talked about the roof at Long Joe. Needed work at South Street Elementary and the Crocker Elementary School. In attendance, Ms. Sally Craigin was there, the superintendent, Mr. Assistant Superintendent, Jokla and Giacchinto, the principal of Long Joe, Mr. Craig Shalafu, South Street Elementary Principal John Thompson, Director of Building Maintenance, Tom Peterson, City of Fitchburg Building Commissioner Mark Bababato, Chief Procurement Officer, Mary Delaney, City Auditor Calvin Brooks, Chief of Staff AJ Derigney, and Mayor Stephen Dina Tally. We talked about the roof and at length about Long Joe, and Mr. Hamilton gave us a number of options to look at. Slate roof replacement, synthetic replacement, and those were the two big items. And we were given a lot of information on what to do and what to help, and particularly the city officers were very helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Any discussion? Yes?
Did you consider any kind of electric savings roofs, or I don't know what you would call them, besides the slate? Were you saying slate just for historic reasons?
No, both for the, not just historic, what's on there, but also how to save money and what was the best and...
It was, it was, there were options.
There are options. Slate roof carries no guarantee. Synthetic slate replacement provides 50 years of life. And asphalt replacement, which carries no warranty based on the manufacturer's installation specification. So I don't think we would go with that. We're probably looking at the synthetic slate, which is cheaper, but also has a warranty, so.
Excuse me, I can't think of the word, but I'm saying, you know, but...
Solar?
Solar panels, no, I don't, we haven't, we haven't talked about solar panels for Long Joe.
We did, we did, yeah. Those would only be an op-, well, the option that we're looking to pursue is for the asphalt roof. And that might be an option only for the asphalt roof, not for so-, uh, slate or synthetic slate, so. I guess first things first, we get the roof on and then, and then look at it. And also, we have to see what Unitil's cap space is for municipal buildings and all that, so we don't know if there's even space available for Unitil in their market area for us to do a solar project of that size. So, but if they, if there was, and it's economically viable, we'll look into it.
But the main thing would be to get the roof, and then there might be some additions later on if needed.
I didn't know if there was any new, the latest product that would be roof and solar too. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I don't know, I've heard some things along these lines, but...
I've looked into that within the last year, and those products aren't commercially available yet. I mean Tesla was supposed to be coming out with something, and it's not in production yet.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Well, I think that covers school building needs. Does that?
Yes.
Okay. Policy committee? Ms. Craigin?
We have not had a meeting yet to date. At this point, I am the remaining member of policy who has not moved along to our city council.
Right.
So if the mayor considers appointing a couple of new members, we can get moving on that. I actually emailed AJ on that as well, so.
Probably this may be the right time to mention the process going forward for the appointment of the two new school committee members. The deadline to apply is February 16th. If anyone viewing public is, or in the public in general is interested, the deadline to apply is February 16th, and you would do that at the city clerk's office at 166 Boulder Drive. And then the decision would be made by a joint convention of the city council and school committee on March 6th. And a decision will be made at that time about who will be taking the seats vacated by Ms. Fleming and Ms. Walsh. Any questions? Policy. Student support committee?
Nothing new to report.
Thank you. School personnel committee? That's been me, and there's nothing to report. Oh, we do?
We have, I just got information, we would be having negotiations with the teachers in March.
Okay, good. Executive committee? I have nothing to report. And now, what we've all been waiting for is the student report. Matthew, you want to start?
Yeah, sure. Alright, so I'm sure for a lot of you, this is your favorite part of the meeting. So the drama club has met with an outstanding yield of progress in just the short amount of time it has before its state competition in March. And it's called Something's Rotten, the State of Denmark. So it's a live stage adaptation of Hamlet. Some of you may know that. Anybody? And so we'll, I'm in it, and we're performing at Chelmsford High School, March 3rd. Hopefully, there's no snow day on that day. So we're gonna, we're going to be competing the first round against several other high schools in the state, and then we'll move up, hopefully, with the METG, which is the Massachusetts Educational Theater Guild. See any questions on that?
Seeing none?
Okay. Alright, so student council has also initiated its Valentine's Day flower sale. Those who are interested in purchasing roses for $3 will sign up for their flowers to be delivered to them, or if they want it to be delivered anonymously, then they can order it early. The flowers are from health teacher Mr. Doug Romano, who's also the owner of Romano's Nursery. I don't know if that's in Fitchburg or not, but...
It is.
See any questions on that?
I have a question, is that open to anybody, or is it just the students?
I'm sure, because it's, it is student council, and we're primarily just trying to stick with the students. But I mean, we could always ask.
I didn't know if it was a fundraiser, I didn't know if it was...
Oh yeah, this is mainly, mainly for student council. I could ask the president.
Within the school?
But I could always, you know, order one for you, and then if you were interested, whatever. Yeah, no problem. Alright, so the multicultural club. My favorite club, because I'm in it. No, but this was one of the first clubs I joined, because, you know, coming to Fitchburg, I realized there's so much diversity and there's so much culture. They're having their first event of the year in the cafeteria, and it's called the karaoke slash multicultural potluck night. So there will be, there will be food, there will be music, there will be dance. Not sure exactly what the program's going to be like. I will have to ask the president, who is Isabella Sandoval. And it's just amazing, because, you know, we were a club that was virtually stagnant a year ago, and now we've built, and the recruitment process has surely advanced, and with the work of Isabella and Ms. Rivera, who's a Spanish teacher there, I think we've done a lot. See any questions on multicultural club?
When is the date of the event?
Yes, I didn't mention that. Monday, February 12th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Alright. So the Red Poet Society just recently convened in the school's library, and they just, it may sound like they just talk about poetry, that's not all they do. They, they talk about all forms of literature, and it's more of like investigating truth and conversation. And so it's not just poetry and reading, you know, literature. So they participate in workshops and activities that may inspire them to just come together and talk about themselves and their issues with life. Some of them bring in musical instruments, so it's kind of like a therapy for many people. It's led by President Emily Hill, she's in a lot with the school as well. So it's primarily poetry, but they, again, they use other forms of literature. So yeah, they interchange different forms of expression, like I said, music, poetry, could be writing, things like that. So it's not just, you know, writing a book report, stuff like that. So any questions on that?
Do you know how often they meet? Like that they'll have like a night like that?
I think it's like once a month, a couple, like maybe two.
Yeah, that's great.
It's kind of, like, they don't meet often, but it's like, and they have refreshments, so it's very nice.
Yeah, I saw some things online, that was really, that looked pretty cool, yeah.
Alright. Any other questions? Alright, so this was something that Mr. Roach introduced to the school. It's a new thing, it's called the attendance challenge. And I'm not sure if it's because we have been having issues with attendance lately, but we're kicking off quarter three with the attendance challenge. And with that, we've actually been seeing gradual progress with attendance, school-wide attendance, which is interesting. So pace some absentees. It's mainly for people who struggle with staying in school, you know, coming to school. Some people have transportation issues, and those are usually settled on their own. But I guess we just use incentives to make people come to school. So like, in the raffles that we do, sometimes we, I don't know, gift cards, some people just, I guess that really entices people to come to school. So if that works, then that's something Mr. Roach really looked into, so.
To add on to that, for, there's like a system, so for like the class with the highest weekly percentage of attendance, everyone in that class gets a raffle ticket. Or if a student has zero to no absences and no tardies, they get, I think it's like five raffle tickets. So it's like a system, so they try to get the class as a whole, and then students individually as well. Now, it's gonna be my turn to talk. I'm a current member of the Current Events Club, and we recently broke up into subgroups to try to conquer more faster. And I am the head of one of the groups for mental health, so we try to spread awareness for mental health, such as coping with stress, anxiety. And we recently put a couple like motivational quote jars, and one in the main office and one in guidance. So if you guys visit Fitchburg High, there'll be one there. And we're working on laminating and getting posters up in the boys and girls bathrooms on ways to cope with anxiety and stress. So like, you know, if you're taking a test and you go to the bathroom, because you don't know what to do, just a little reminder, like, you know, you're not alone, you know, we're thinking about ways. We also, we're brainstorming new ideas and ways to help make a change within our surroundings as a community. We, a meeting, one of the subgroups, which is global warming, talked about, like, let's start to make a small change in the Fitchburg community, and ultimately around the globe. But it would be a good start to start at Fitchburg High School, and we were thinking that what the potential cost would be for the school and district would save if we switch over to renewable energy sources such as solar panels. I had emailed Mr. Jokla about it, and we will talk about it as well. And we want to compare the prices. I'm not quite sure if the roof is able to hold solar panels. I was talking to Mr. Roach about it too. But it's just an idea, because like, to make a big change, we need to start small and within our community. So I feel like if, you know, Fitchburg High School, one of the, a really good place in Fitchburg, like starts off, it'll kind of set a chain reaction, everything. Any, any questions?
Just something to think about, the high school has lots of land around it, I believe, you know? And it doesn't, solar doesn't necessarily have to go on the roof, it can go on a very advantageous spot where it collects the most sunlight, and that leaves the roof alone. Just, I don't know if you had thought about that?
Yeah.
One of the things, facilities committee has looked at that. We've looked at the field, just before...
Behind the tennis courts, right?
Behind tennis court, but also coming up, Mr. Jokla.
Oh, yes.
Very much involved in looking, we've looked at ways, even looking at solar panels as like a garage.
Yes, I was told about that, yes, that was a good idea.
So we've, we've done quite a bit of that, and we've had a good start now with Ryan Golden Memorial.
Oh yeah, definitely.
Yeah, so.
Moving on. The MCAS biology test will be administered this week on Tuesday, February 6th, and Wednesday, February 7th. This test is for any new students of Fitchburg High School, as well as any students who have not yet met the requisite passing requirements. Freshmen will not be taking this exam, because it's not the official freshman MCAS. It's just for students that haven't passed with the requirement, of course, and any like Catholic school students that transferred over and never took MCAS, or something like that. Any questions on that? There were, there's gonna be an early release on Wednesday, February 7th. Parent conferences will take place in the evening at Fitchburg High School on Wednesday, February 28th. The next student advisory council meeting will be held on Wednesday, February 7th, at 7:10 in the morning in the main office. The student advisory council is open to any and all students. As the discussed topics are being generated, the recent master schedule survey, which me and Matthew helped put input on, we will be, it will be reviewed and discussed in addition to other topics. So one day for advisory, we passed out a survey on Google Classroom to get the input of students on how the drop-two schedule works for them, with questions such as like, do you feel this best improves your academic learning? Does this give you enough time to do your homework? Do you want to switch the schedule? Things like that to get, you know, feedback on what the students feel. Any questions?
I also wanted to add on that, it was also open to teachers as well. We did look at some results from the teachers. I was more interested in what the teachers had to say, being, Fitchburg High School being a public school. I just, I was just more interested in what the teachers' responses were, and many of them found that the current schedule is not working for them, and they want to change it. They, some of them want to shorten it, some of them want to lengthen it. So I found that interesting, I didn't know why, but some of them seems to, what I found was when I was looking into it, because each teacher gets two prep periods, and so with the change that most of the teachers want, they get three prep periods. So it looks like a lot of the teachers want more prep periods than classes. So, interesting.
I also feel like most teachers think that the drop-two schedule doesn't do us justice. For example, I'm taking four AP classes currently, and we, we miss out on about like 40 days, 30 days of what another school would get to prepare for the AP test because of the drop, the way the drop-two schedule works. So things are kind of at a faster pace, so I feel like teachers don't necessarily agree with this drop-two schedule because of that, because they, they have to speed things up. So like, for example, in my AP stats class with Ms. O'Neil, wonderful, excellent teacher, you miss, you'll miss a day and you miss a whole chapter. It's like, you gotta move really fast-paced, so I feel like teachers don't feel like the students are getting what they need because of the schedule. I mean, from my point of view, I like the schedule, I think it works with how many classes I'm taking with the drop-two. I get an extra day to do my homework for two classes, you know, and it's, it's more manageable for me, in my opinion. I don't know about other students, because with my course load, I feel like having two classes, like, not, not the next day, when I have a lot of homework, it kind of like relieves stress off me with sports and, you know, balancing a social life and everything on top of that. I feel like the drop-two schedule is very beneficial to students, but in a sense, it also has its cons.
So, the survey was, did you say you guys put that together to?
Yeah.
And was that based on feedback? Or were you just thinking, let's kind of find out what people are thinking? Is there like some process that's starting about thinking about the schedule, or?
Yeah, well, the teachers were surveyed at first, so we got...
By you, or?
By Mr. Roach. He created a survey, and they were all, they all answered it. And based on that, we were able to modify the questions and the answers to suit for the students, so the students would be able to comprehend it. Because some of the questions were in fact pretty complex. So we were, from a student's perspective, we were able to make it, make it, make the question in a way that any student could comprehend it. Even if they don't want to thoroughly read it, they would still understand the question. And we made the answers not, not too in-depth, to the point where it's like strongly disagree, partly agree. Things like that, we just kind of got to the point of it. Personally, I think the survey went well.
Could I ask you a follow-up there, though? Like, are you, is this part of a bigger process that you are all kind of examining this? Do you have like some timeline about what you all are thinking, or?
I don't think there's a current timeline, but we will be discussing it on Wednesday, so the next meeting, I'll definitely follow up to see how that goes. I think Mr. Roach is, just wants to see what the feedback is, so then he'll make his next move after everything.
And Wednesday's the student advisory council, is that what you're discussing it at?
Yes, the meeting. And the 2018 and 2019 Program of Studies, Fitchburg High School will begin its scheduling process for the 18, 19 year in a few weeks. The first step is for all students and parents in grades nine through 11 to review the program of studies, so all your potential classes that you are interested in taking next year. So we review that, and then in a couple weeks, Mr. Roach will provide more information for parents and students, and then guidance councils will eventually end up meeting with all students to further plan your schedules for next year and make it best for you. Any questions? And moving on, finally, upcoming sports events for this week. Girls' and girls' basketball are playing tomorrow versus Groton Dunstable at 6:30. The girls' and boys' basketball are playing Friday, the 9th, versus Lemonster. The girls will be playing at 5:30 and the boys at 7:00 p.m.
Where, home or away?
I think it's at Lemonster.
The boys?
They're both.
The boys and girls are both, okay.
I think they're both, yeah. And lastly, boys and girls indoor track on Saturday, the 10th, District E Championships at 9:00 a.m.
Track team is doing quite well, I understand, no?
Oh, they are doing...
Cindy Donlin, they set a record.
They set, I think they set multiple records. The four-by-four track team, I think it's Landon Tucker, Eli Ashmore, Kobe Sadler, and Angel Figaroa. They are just...
Really? Kind of quick, aren't they?
Sweeping, like sweeping everything, like first place, breaking records.
At the Reggie Lewis Center, I think they set a track record, you know, with the...
Yeah, they have the, we broke a record shirts and everything. And the girls too. The girls are doing a sensational job as well. There's a lot of very fast, strong female freshman runners this year. So I'm, I'm very hopeful for the track team, it's a good year. It's a good year for all sports.
Yeah, it's a good year, hasn't it?
Yeah, it's been a great year. Yeah, overall, that's what's happening in FHS right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, before you conclude and stop us, if you have anything that you want us to add, you know, we did, we did create this document and in hopes that someone would ask questions and provide us with anything that you want us to add and talk about. We don't want to just sit here and bore you all, and you have all these other important stuff talked up, the city. So just tell us, tell us.
Yeah, if there's like any...
Matthew, you kind of joked before, but that's why we're here, is about you guys, really. We, and we love hearing about it. That's, that's what we, we really love to hear about, what's happening in the schools. That's why we like to bring people forward, and, yeah, and we love to hear what's going on at the high school, especially when it's good news.
Yeah, I feel like we're making really good progresses in school. Like a very positive environment, you know, things are going well, from, from my perspective, at least.
More other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Approve the minutes from the previous school committee meetings of January 8th, 2018?
I just wanted, Ms. Greenlee's and I talked about this, and I don't know if we had to share it with everybody, but on page two of the minutes, where it says, looking at the school district inclusion plan, it's actually the improvement plan. I don't know if we had to call that...
Where is that?
So at page two, it's under the student support paragraph.
Yep, yep.
And it's in that first sentence, it's just that, it should just be district improvement, and we already, she already made that change over there, so.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you.
I also need to apologize, because Mr. Stevens is not listed as being present, even though I have him recorded all through the meeting as contributing, and I apologize for that.
Okay. Got it. Thank you. So, right, motion made to approve the minutes of January 8th, 2018? Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is unanimous, thank you. No need for executive session, I don't believe. Communications. Ms. Craigin?
Sure. So, just wanted to reiterate that we are having a brand-new contest for third graders throughout our district, which is we're asking them to make an original poster, poster about the importance of licensing your dog. We have distributed these flyers throughout our elementary schools, and I'll be bringing more down to Market Basket. The deadline will be coming up in another week. First prize is $25, there will be honorable mentions. The mayor will be one of our judges, and we're really happy to be doing this. This is a joint project between Be Positive Therapy Pets and Community Education, Fitchburg Public Schools, and our animal control officer. So we need to bring that awareness, so that people who have dogs will get a rabies vaccine, and then license their dogs, and it is less expensive to license a dog that has been spayed and neutered. And, another quickie. So we still have donation boxes. Members of the public, if you have a business and you would like to have a donation box to help support the 8th grade Washington DC field trip, we would love to bring you a box. You can call central office at 978-345-9550 and ask, or just call me directly at 978-320-1335. We've had them all throughout the community. People are so generous, we have made money that we were able to offer some scholarships to kids that we wouldn't have been able to offer at this time, last year. So this is moving forward, and let us know if you need a box, we have them ready to go. So this is moving forward and let us know if you need a box, we have them ready to go.
Alright, all the adults here tonight, that would be excluding you two, although you're close enough. Here's, here's, here's the contribution, let's all put some money in before we leave today.
Hey, wanna pass that around?
We will, thank you. You're gonna add something to the box?
But when you, when you started speaking about dogs, I remembered the um, Academic Success Center at Fitchburg High School just recently got a therapy dog. For students.
Yes, Mrs. Roberts, we, we've been corresponding, I'm thrilled.
Oh, I am so excited for a new puppy, he's so cute.
I have, I have been very active in this and uh. My friends at Gomes Package Store on Ashby State Road, uh, have contributed six hundred dollars. Enough to send one student. We've had some.
Is that what it's, it's, it's six hundred a student?
Yeah.
Ouch.
Yeah, and it gets more expensive every year.
Okay.
It's like driver's ed.
Okay. Anything further? Hearing none, uh, we're at the public comment period, five minute limit, anyone wishing? To speak in the public comment section, please come forward, identify yourself. Seeing none, moving on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I have to say, we've had great students as student reps and I hate to compare, but boy, oh boy. You two are incredible. Not only knowledgeable, but you are the kindest people. Because when you talk about your, your fellow students and the work that's going on. You can just hear the kindness and uh, we're at a time where we need more kindness in this world. Uh, and to know that two of our Fitchburg High School students are adding to that, it's really wonderful. So don't hesitate, you know, inform us, we need to know what's going on, we like to know what's going on. We like to hear your opinions, uh, and uh, Paula Jacinto and I were looking at, there's new legislation going forward. About civics, uh, I'm actually going to the State House tomorrow to put some, give some input into that. About social studies curriculum and civics curriculum, uh, learning about elections, learning about civic responsibility. That's, it's a bill that's moving through the State House right now. Uh, and it's really related, you know, to what you talk about and that commitment and getting involved every day, so. Just had to say that because uh, it's very impressive, very impressive. So uh, Tamiya Thomas was not able to make it tonight, so we'll bring her back at our next meeting. But speaking of uh, community service, uh, you're probably all familiar now with Project Three Fifty One. Uh, I'm not sure, count um, school committee member Reynolds, if you are. But uh, it's a, there's an eighth grader from every district in the state, so three hundred and fifty one districts. Who go and spend a day together uh, with the governor and with other folks to do uh, voluntary community service work. Uh, and our representative is Jaleen Palladian, uh, so she's here, that's already happened. And so she's here to talk about, and I think you're also a member of the CAPS program, right? Which explains the uniform, so you can talk a little bit about your visit. Uh, as one of the representatives for Three Fifty One and while you're up there, talk a little bit about the year two of the CAPS program, so join us at the mic.
But um, for Project Three Fifty One, we went the twenty eighth, yeah, Sunday the twenty eighth of January. And there was different um, activities for us to do. Some of us, out of the three hundred and fifty one students, we went to the Martin Luther King Junior School, Cradles to Crayons and.
Why don't, why don't you come and join, join her here and introduce yourself also?
I'm Mary Kringan, a resident of Fitchburg, a retired educator. And I am um, chairperson of the Educators Advisory Group for Project Three Fifty One, I've been involved for the eight years. While I was principal, uh, and uh, it's my pleasure. Uh, to spend the day with Jolene, JJ as we know, her as, and she will serve for a full year of leadership. So she can explain and I'll fill in the blanks for you.
So at the Martin Luther King Junior School, what we did is, some of the things that we were able to do is, we painted. Over three hundred and fifty feet around the cafeteria and throughout the school of newly painted walls. And then we made over one hundred and ten teacher kits. For teachers in the classrooms of the school, we organized their library, um, we redid all the books, put them back on the shelves. We were able to paint murals in the cafeteria of different fruits and vegetables. And we made kits for, like grocery bags for the seniors of Boston and Dorchester with the food truck company.
Students went to Greater Boston Food Bank and put uh, packages of food together. Pine Street Inn, um, personal care hygiene packets for the homeless and I believe they baked some apple pies or made some apple pies. First Lady Lauren Baker, uh, her commitment is to uh, DCF. And so students went to the State House with her and made a thousand uh, packets of um. Bags for the uh, students who joined us from Puerto Rico due to the hurricane. And they would deliver it out to the western part of the state, because the western part of the state always seems to get forgotten, um, when it comes around. Um, and um, JJ, uh, we did three hours of service. We left Gardner High School at six thirty uh, Sunday morning and returned back at seven o'clock Sunday night, a full day. Of um, great, great um, service and uh, commitment to uh, meet others and. JJ was on the bus with the North Central Mass students, but her service hero team, who was your service hero is?
Bill Russell.
Bill Russell. Um, so, so she will serve for a year uh, in his name and honor. And um, they also um, have a geographical. Representative across the state, so she could have been with people from Pittsfield. Or um, they, we fly them up off Nantucket, or they take the, the ferry off of the vineyard, they come from, as. Mr. Avanel said, the three hundred and fifty one cities and towns in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Uh, we're eight years old, it's a nonprofit organization, uh, no money from the state or the school district. Uh, any, and uh, it's all uh, donations. And she will then, go ahead, tell them what your question.
Oh, I, um, so Lisa Hughes from Channel Four, um. She came and she was asking Governor Baker questions and so they asked the, the students of Project Three Fifty One. If they had any questions, if they, if they could ask Governor Baker what it would be, what their question would be to him. And I stood up and I asked what made him wanna become governor in the first place. And um, she took so ma- like certain amounts of so many questions, cause of the time limit that she had to ask. Uh, she used mine and he said that he did it so he could improve the community. And his parents were always like, one was a Democrat, one was a Republican and he wanted to kind of. He said it in a really funny way, I don't even know if I could repeat.
He said their votes canceled each other out at the polling place. But that he grew up with service and, and when he was in college, he um, was a big brother. And so he has always committed uh, to Project Three Fifty One and they, they come uh, every year uh, and speak to the kids. Um, then they, we dumped with, we started the day?
We started the day, uh, uh, the John F. Kennedy Presidential Library in Boston.
They had a quick tour, because two, last year when we went, um, while the kids were leaving, they were very disappointed, they didn't get to see the library. And the director of the library asked the kids, how many, this is your first time here. And about ninety percent of the kids raised their hand, no more school trips, no more field trips. Um, and so as educators, we asked them this year if we could tour the library. So we had probably a thirty minute quick tour around while we were waiting for all the buses to arrive. Um, and I believe they were all given packets with a free ticket inside to return with their family to go back. Um, so JJ now has the opportunity to sign up to do um, her next service, which is uh, Cradles to Crayons. Um, collecting um, gently used clothes. And then she has the opportunity to represent the governor. Um, at uh, the Fitchburg Memorial Day Exercises and read the governor's proclamation, that was a new thing. The um, Secretary of um, Veteran Affairs, Urina, has asked all the Three Fifty One students. To um, contact their community and read. Nine ele- over the summer, she'll have the opportunity to collect care items for uh, nine eleven service. And on September eleventh, um, go to the Rose Kennedy Greenway in Boston. And help put care packages together for our homeless veterans and also for our servicemen who are um, serving overseas. And then in the fall, while, when she's in ninth grader, she has the opportunity to uh, do a food drive. Uh, for the Fitchburg. Um, so what we do is we help students understand the process of community service and designing a plan. Um, implementing that plan, reflecting on that plan. Um, and we coach them through the first two and then um, their, their fall one is their big one on their own. Um, and then she'll have the opportunity to apply to be on the Alumni Council. And she can serve um, as a Three Fifty One Ambassador. Uh, until uh, her senior year in hi- high school, where then Mr. Kraft gives a twenty thousand dollar scholarship. To a Project Three Fifty One alumni um, member and he is there, uh, along with several Patriot players. To uh, present that graduating senior a um, scholarship. And uh, we have several students now that we're in our eighth year, who are in uh, college that come out and volunteer. So uh, it's a great organization, um, JJ is a great representative from Fitchburg, uh, she stood up twice. As proud as can be and said, I'm JJ from Fitchburg, so Fitchburg's name got out there uh, twice. Um, Globe did an article and the following day, Governor Baker uh, was on a talk show and spoke about. Um, the inspiration he gets from the eighth graders. And when you put three hundred and fifty one eighth graders together in a room. There is energy, trust me, lots of energy, so um, it's my pleasure to represent Project Three Fifty One uh, tonight. And I would like to get a picture of um, Superintendent and the mayor and Mr. Thomas for um. JJ to send to the Executive Director. Can I do that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Uh, there any, do you wanna do questions first, if there were any?
Sure, I am, any questions?
JJ, do you stay in touch with some of the kids that you've met?
Yes, everybody that was on our team for Bill Russell World on a huge group chat now and like every day. One person decides to be annoying.
You're lucky it's only one.
Sometimes.
I just went, JJ's mom and dad have been the big supporters of Fitchburg Public Schools for, for many years. And had dad in school and, yeah, so, I suppose say that, thank mom and dad, they do a nice job.
You know, I still have the picture of you, you know.
Yeah, and my sister still has a picture of you with her.
Alright, wanna do a quick photo?
And you guys can be on uh, Facebook and. ProjectThreeFiftyOne.org.
We also should thank Ms. Kringan for her many years of service as an educator.
I told you, I went to school here and I taught here. I know the library was bigger than this.
Nobody, you never really escape.
I tried to get Ms. Kringan to come back as a principal here, but she had just started uh, up in Princeton. And watch out for Ms. Kringan on the roadway, she's still out there running.
Okay, you're principal, Mr. Thomas, uh, there's a, you have a field trip for you, it's one that's familiar to you, so. Um, really, it's just a question of if you have any questions, Mr. Thomas will come and answer them. But it's uh, the Nature's Classroom in Charlton, Mass, we've sent a number of students in a number of schools to that field trip. Any questions?
Have fun.
Okay, so we'll just, we'll, we'll, we'll move the field trip forward on the, on the agenda items, thank you. Uh, just an announcement, a reminder, um, the other night on Chronicle, uh, there was a famous comedian, Jimmy Tingle. And he's so famous that he's coming to Fitchburg on May fifth uh, for the gala. Uh, our gala this year is May fifth and it's going to be a combination dinner, silent auction. And Mr. Tingle is going to be our comedian for the night. Uh, so it's a little bit of a different setup than we've had before. Uh, and we are also going to have a um, cocktail hour for the hour preceding the dinner. And um, we just nailed down um, Boulder Cafe. Uh, and what's it, Winery are going to be uh, doing the service for us and sharing um, that evening. So for people out there, starting at five thirty on Saturday, May fifth. Uh, will be the cocktail hour before the dinner. Uh, at that point, we'll move into the cafeteria at Fitchburg High, there will be a wonderful dinner. There will be um, music, uh, band that we've had before, a silent auction. And then after uh, the dinner, Jimmy Tingle will be performing, so for folks out there, you get cocktails. Dinner, silent auction, music, camaraderie with other community members. And a Boston-based comedian for fifty dollars a ticket, which is probably the best deal going in this area. Uh, and you don't even have to go far, so uh, we'll be doing more with the, we just sent the invitations out to the printer today. Uh, so we'll be getting them out soon, but everyone at home, mark your calendar, May fifth, uh, Saturday, May fifth, for the gala. So um, what you received uh, in your mail, and then I just handed out another one. Because uh, we've added some things to it that will uh, do a little bit more extensively, but. There's a lot that goes on behind the scenes in a school district the size of Fitchburg and people see whatever they see. In one school and then you see it at school committee. But I thought it would be interesting, an interesting exercise to put together a sheet about our partnerships. All the different partnerships, academic partnerships we're involved in. So, we're going to make this available to the public, we'll put it up on the website and we'll put it on our Facebook page. But I just wanted to go over um, what these are. Uh, the first one is a Learn Launch Institute. And we're part of a um, network that's not only Massachusetts, but it's a national network called Maple. And it's all about uh, individualized learning. And you can see there's a, uh, it's personalized learning, uh, and the use of technology. Um, the, it names the people here that are most involved in it. Eileen Spiny, our tech director, Chris Turner from Technology, Deena Gagny, Craig Shalafu, Jessica Stadolsky. And Paula Jacinto, and those are the main key team members. But also lots of us get involved in the different activities. Uh, Paula and another group went to a two-day conference that was held, where did you tell me this morning? At the Heinz Auditorium with some of the most advanced, top-notch speakers in technology right now. So just to let people know that this is only one of the um, things that we're involved in. There are thirty seven uh, districts uh, across Massachusetts that are part of this Maple Consortium. The second one we're involved in is the Massachusetts Math Science Partnership. This is one that we've been involved with for a while, it's uh, involved with Worcester Polytechnic Institute. Um, and uh, Andrew Chen is a part of that and you've heard us talk about Andrew Chen. He is a very uh, renowned math professor um, at, at MIT. And this is a partnership that we're involved in, uh, with the uh, Lemonster Public Schools are also part of this initiative. The um, Math and Science Partnership. The, uh, a new one that we just got involved with this year is the third one, the Level Three High School Turnaround Network Project. committee of not only Fitchburg High School staff, but central office staff. And we work with our, our DSAC and on, and it's basically to identify, again, what are some of the strategic areas that need improvement at Fitchburg High School and working with them to address that. And one of the, the key person, our key contact there is Jeremy Roach. The next one is the Leap Project, and Roanne and Paula and others are involved with that. And it's the Low Income Education Access Project. And this, again, is a statewide initiative with other districts that are there. Our team goes, learns from them, they learn from us. A lot of information is exchanged. Then the Mass Gate, Mass Inside Gateway to College Initiative. We've been a partner with Mass Insight for, I want to say, seven years maybe. And in the past two years, has been this additional component of a gateway to college component. Mark Pierce is a teacher at the high school, is the key kind of lead on this. And it's really about analyzing student data, using student data, using the thinking protocols in the classroom, and creating a teacher box for teacher tools and resources to be used specifically in the area of mathematics. We're like one of the premier districts as part of Mass Insight. I sent you a report just, I think, last week about the number of students, the phenomenal increase of students we have taking AP courses at Fitchburg High School. The numbers are just getting large every year. And most importantly, we're getting more and more students who are scoring in the threes, fours, and fives, which are the scores that give them college credit. And for mom and dad, that's a big plus because you not only get the high school credit, but you get college credit. So it's a course that you don't have to take. So it's a major savings for them. Footsteps to Brilliance is the initiative that I brought in here in preschool and the early literacy initiative that uses the iPads and Chromebooks. We had put forward a three-million-word challenge, which the students reached months before it was to happen. And I won't tell you what it is, but we're going to be about ready to come out with another big challenge for our preschoolers and early childhood students. And it will be in the millions and will be way over three million. There's a big conference, Footsteps to Brilliance, on Thursday here at Fitchburg State University because it's now expanding to the whole north-central area. And Fitchburg really was the key. We started it at the beginning. We'll be presenting at that conference. And about 10 other districts around us have all decided to join the Footsteps to Brilliance initiative. Then the Excel Network was a, really a competition. They invited school districts to apply to be part of the Excel Network. There are nine other districts in Massachusetts or nine in total with us. And it's a network of districts that are looking at social-emotional learning. So there's a team, again, that gets together with teams from other districts. We share resources. We look in depth into, you know, what are the areas of social-emotional learning that are important to, you know, to the city of Fitchburg and to us. And it's just a really great, the president of the Teachers Association is a member of the team. And then other teachers also participate when we go to the conferences and work with the other school districts in Massachusetts. Other partnerships that I will give you more information on at a future meeting are the PBIS Multi-Year Program. And that is a, looking at the ways in which we manage and enhance and support student behaviors in the school district. School-based teams attending a multi-year, the UDL Tier One Institute, you've heard UDL, you've heard Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three talked about when the principals come forward and talk about their school improvement plans. And then last but not least, our partnerships with North Central United Way. The Youth Ventures Program is between United Way and Mount Wachusett Community College. And you can see the schools that are involved with that, McKay, Long Joe, Memorial, Goodrich, and Fitchburg High School. And the Ashoka Change Making, that's a new one from this year, and the schools that are involved with that. Paula, why don't you say a couple of sentences about that? You're more involved in that.
Sure. So Youth Ventures and Ashoka both come under the umbrella of the United Way. And the Mount is the key agency that supports that. Youth Ventures is a very student-focused but practical activity. The students and their champion talk about something in the community that they think their work, it's kind of community service on steroids, something that will improve their community. So it could be a fundraiser. I know in the past, Mrs. Roberts did a fundraiser for ALS.
Yes.
So all of the schools, they're in the midst of this work. So we didn't get sufficient information from every school to do a complete report, but we will have that because they're in the midst of doing their work. The Ashoka Change Making is different. It's, the Youth Ventures is all around entrepreneurship and helping students to understand how they can grow into being an entrepreneur. Ashoka Change Making is social entrepreneurship. How to create, the, the goal is, or the vision is, how to help kids create in themselves a sense of community, a sense of understanding other points of view, empathy, working to the betterment of the community, not just about money, and that kind of thing. So the goal for this group, and we've had a series of training days for all the team members involved, because it is different, is a little bit of responsive classroom, a little bit of social justice, a little bit of how do we help kids develop a voice and choice about talking about a problem in their school, and then coming up with some solutions, and then taking leadership and active roles in working on that problem to make whatever it is better. So there are a couple of celebration dates coming up that we'll have information at the March School Committee meeting for you.
And then last but definitely not least is our partnership with the Fitchburg Department of Public Works and WPI on an ecological green thinking project. So we don't just go far and wide to find partners, there are partners right here in Fitchburg. So we'll get you more information on that one. Any question on any of these partnerships?
I wanted to add something on to the Mass Inside Gateway to College. When you started speaking about the AP courses and how many students have been taking them, the environment at Fitchburg High School was just so positive. Like Mr. Roach will talk about it and like, there's so much like support and encouragement to like, get the students out there. And it makes like students that don't think they're smart enough, it makes them feel like they can, you know? It makes, it makes, it makes like everyone kind of like on an equal playing field, that everyone has a chance to succeed, everyone has a chance to thrive. And I feel like it's that kind of confidence boost that's like raising our members and like the really positive environment with Mr. Roach and the administration at Fitchburg High School.
When is the event on Thursday? And this is at Fitchburg State? Is this something that?
The, at Thursday for Footsteps to Brilliance, it's a, it's a north-central kind of conference day. And I think it's 8:30 or 9:00 in the morning till?
Might be 10:00 to noon.
Yeah.
10:00 to noon. In the McKay C Building, Room 159.
Yep, 10 o'clock, 10:01. 10:01 at McKay C. So that's the one right next to the McKay Arts Academy.
And I had something to add for the Footsteps to Brilliance. I wanted to let Paula know too. So we now have a, we have a pop-up library at MIHN, Homeless Shelter in Lemonster. And of course, that has many, many brochures about the Footsteps to Brilliance program. So as families come in, they, they will be exposed to that as well. This is really impressive, all of these partnerships. The one closest to my heart is the Fitchburg Department of Public Works and WPI partnership. Cannot wait to hear more about that.
We're meeting next week.
Yay.
And if I could, the, so part of the challenge is to expand the, from three million words to many million. But we're also, we met last week and we also have a plan to now imbue the Footsteps to Brilliance for home use with all of our kindergartners. So our plan is to have some of the, at least one of the Footsteps to Brilliance books printed out, sent home in a little book bag with all the kindergartners either before February vacation or April vacation, it's a matter of timing, include the information about how to log on, because every student can, because we're concerned over vacations, February, April, and then summer, we have learning loss. So they'll have an opportunity to log on at home. And then that will become part of every new enrollment packet for every new enrolling preschooler in kindergarten. So between the time kids enroll in the spring until when they start school, they have access to this tool at home. So we're hoping to reach another five or 600 families in the next three months.
That's amazing.
Military precision.
So we're going to keep developing this. And I actually have like a vision that somehow we've even developed this in the form of some kind of a three-fold summary, a lot less information, but basically to be able to say, because this is the stuff nobody sees. This is what's going on in the kitchen. This is where the cooking takes place and the ingredients are. You know, you only see the classroom or, you know, parts of things. But there's a lot of work that's going on every day by all of these teams of people. So it helped me to bring, I didn't realize we had this much until I started bringing it all together in one place. So school facilities update. Last Thursday, I went and met, I went to the, our Passios Extension School in Lunenburg. And we Skyped in St. Francis to, to the, St. Anthony's, to the Passios School. And I got to talk with all of the staff, find out how things were going. And I've got to tell you, things are going very smoothly. I filled them in on what was happening at Crocker. We are at a point where their, Crocker is shaped like a big H. And the area that was most affected, if you're looking at the building, is on the right-hand side and it's a two-story section of the H. From the leg of the H over to the crossbar and the other H was the area that was not so much affected and just simply needed a cleaning. That cleaning has been done. And we now have access to that portion of the building. And actually, on Wednesday, we'll be opening that section of the building to staff to come with custodial supervision and administrative supervision to be able to begin to take materials out of that part of the building as, as needed, as they need. So I've created a whole protocol for how that happens. While that's happening, the, the right-handed leg of the H is, we've gone out to bid now on who the abatement company will be. Once that's finalized, that will begin the abatement of that section of the school. And that will go to about mid-March. So around March 10th to 15th or so.
March 18th is the time.
March 18th, okay. So March 18th. And then at that point, there is also work that needs to be done to the heating system and the HVAC. So once the abatement component of the work is finished, then the plumbers and the HVAC people will come in and get the HVAC and plumbing in that section back up and running. So we're really looking at middle of April, Tax Day, and a little bit later for being able to totally reoccupy the whole building. What the staff has decided at St. Anthony's is they asked if they could stay at St. Anthony's through the MCAS tests, because they really felt that it would be very disruptive to upend the third and fourth graders who are our MCAS-taking grades and move them again and get resettled and take the MCAS test. As you know, Crocker does very well on the MCAS test. And the teachers really felt that they wanted to preserve that as much as possible. My view was it's their decision. When I spoke to them the other day, I said, up to you. You want to stay at St. Anthony's until MCAS is over, you tell me when you're ready to go back. But then with the Passios School, which are our K1 and 2s, as soon as the school is ready, we will move those back. And in a lot of ways, this will help us because we'll be able to make the move in two pieces rather than not. So I did contact Loxie Combs because we're going to have to do an extension of our, our lease there at Passios. And she returned a beautiful email and said, your staff is wonderful, your kids are wonderful. It's not been a problem at all. It's been a pleasure having them here. So we have also been, I know there's been a lot of concern about, you know, do we have enough materials? Do we have enough curriculum materials? We've spent over $200,000 on curriculum materials for both St. Anthony's and Passios. And we have provided other kinds of materials. I just got a call today from Counselor Green because she's collected materials and money. And materials are not always helpful if they're not the right materials. So what we're trying to avoid is people showing up with boxes of a variety of materials. We have people soliciting tissues and hand sanitizer and pencils and stuff. We don't need that. We provide that. There's, there's a little bit of a misunderstanding that the Fitchburg Public Schools don't provide the basics. If someone asks, we'll provide whatever the teacher needs, but we need to know what their needs are. So in speaking with Counselor Green today, she said that she had also collected almost $2,000 in cash. So what I've asked Adam Renda is to identify some, some specific purchases so that those contributors, you know how we have things come by and say, we're accepting $2,000 that'll be used to purchase laptops for such and such a school for something like that. And then we will look at the other donations. So if people are interested in donating, they should contact the principal directly. Contact Mr. Renda because he knows if there's something that they need. And right now, whatever they need will be extra. It won't be the things that they need every day. And given the fact that they're getting back into the building on Wednesday, we're going to start replenishing a lot of our learning materials because we're going to be able to have access to them. So a letter went out, I sent you a copy of the letter, a letter went out this weekend notifying the parents that St. Anthony's would remain in session at St. Anthony's until after MCAS test. And basically, I will let the teachers tell me when they're ready to go back.
When is MCAS?
To Crocker School.
It starts the week before April vacation, English, Language, Arts, and Math, and extends until May 25th. It's not every day, but it's three sections of English.
So they're there till May, after May 25th?
After May 25th, right. So, and, and the Passios School will go back as soon as the school is ready. So that's, that's pretty much where we're at. In terms of the Long Joe Roof, Bob and I will be at the City Council tomorrow night. There are two loan orders on the agenda tomorrow night. One is for the Long Joe Roof, which is $2 million to get out and do that. And the other one is a million dollars for the study for?
Feasibility study.
For the Crocker, for Crocker, the feasibility study. We've been in direct contact with MSBA. There have been emails going back and forth. We're on the right track to move forward on that. So that's going to be happening tomorrow. The work at Long Joe is moving along. The carpet has been removed. A lot of the stuff has been repaired. We're actually going to paint it also because we've stripped down the whole room, all the furniture's out, the floor is going to get a new carpet. And everyone's looking around and going, we really need to paint this, you know, while we're there. So I said, you know, if that doesn't add like a lot of time to- furniture's out, the floor is going to get a new carpet, and everyone's looking around and going, "We really need to paint this," you know, while we're there. So, I said, you know, "If that doesn't add like a lot of time to the project, let's just get it done, and that way, when that's finished, that library is going to be pretty much brand-new." So, that'll be a big plus for that school. So, those are, those are the three major facility pieces on, that are going on. Any question on any of them?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Not a question, but I, well, thought of, could be a question, but I was commenting, what's the closing date for the Fitchburg schools? They're closing, if...
With the snow dates we have now?
We don't know yet.
Right, but I mean, if, why not just stay at St. Anthony's till, for the, for the school year if it's May 25th?
Well, again, I, I, what I said to the teachers is I was going to let that, leave that up to them.
Right.
Because my, my guess is that they would want to get back to Crocker before school ends, to get settled, get their classrooms back, get everything done before they leave for the summer.
To physically close up.
Right, to physically close up. But I'm going to take the cue from them. We, we can stay at St. Anthony's as long as we want to, because we are going to be doing a long-term lease with them. Because once Crocker is out of there, it's going to become a preschool center and possibly an enrollment center. So, we're, we're there for the duration. And the relationship and the location and everything about it could not be better.
Good. Did you want to say?
Yeah, thanks. How is testing season kind of unfolding at Long Joe with that facility? What, are there big changes to the way they normally do things for MCAS there?
Yep, they're, because of the, the need to use different spaces, so they're, Eileen is talking to, I'm not sure if it's Tom Peterson and Electricians, but we need to get some access, and the hotspots are insufficient for the draw when you have all the kids on Chromebooks. So, access in a more solid way, wired way in the cafeteria, in the big spaces.
So, they'll test in there?
I believe so. Craig is working on a schedule. I don't have the schedules yet from the three middle schools, because in the midst of MCAS testing, we have the state review coming in the week after April vacation.
Right.
And they expect to be able to visit schools during that week and watch instruction. We, we've talked to them personally, I don't beat around the bush, you know me, I don't mince words, and they persist that that's the week they're going to come.
We still would like them to push it off till the following year, because it, they're going to come and watch kids taking tests.
Well, they're not going to be allowed in the building.
Right, because they can't be, and from their own regulations.
Right.
So, we'll, we'll work on that.
The program district and school accountability site team, the Department of Ed is coming, they were going to come the week after.
ESE? It's a cyclical thing, and it's our turn this year.
Every six years, by law, they do this in schools. So, we send documents, but then they send a four-to-six, a six-member site team here for four days. It's going to be Tuesday, the 24th, until Friday, the 27th. They're here from like 7:30 in the morning till four in the afternoon. They'll meet with you, they're, one of the focus groups is school committee. They'll meet with stakeholders, parents, students from the high school. So, these two young folks will be invited to talk about their experience in the public schools with the Department of Ed. It's just that MCAS window is a terrible time to do that.
And you explain that to them, but they don't...
Several, in person, at Urban Superintendent.
Is this the new... Numerous phone...
Who's, who's the new commissioner? Do you know this guy?
Well, he doesn't start, it's going to be Jeff Riley, but he doesn't start until July 1st.
Okay.
Yeah.
They have a schedule, and I think part of it is, they already have school schedule for next year, so bumping us off, that messes up their schedule. So, we're not through yet, we're very persistent. So, we, we will keep at this, you know?
And we want, I want this to be a successful event for the district.
Right, right. It's not optimal.
But it's just not optimal.
No.
It's just not.
Okay.
Just also, the high school, we had, as you know, there were some classrooms that were affected there by the sprinkler heads. One of them is the Academic Success Center. We've been over there, we've walked through the building. That's right now in the process, a lot of the work's been done already, so those classrooms, do we have a finish date for that work to be done?
No, we don't, no.
But it's much less, and the, it seems to be going much quicker.
That room is less, but then the, the physics room, the chemistry lab probably will be renovated this summer.
It'll be short-term stuff, and then in the summertime, because they're actually going to replace all the cabinets in the, in its biology, the biology room. So, that'll be a good thing, because it'll get all new cabinets re, and all, but it can't be done during the school year. So, they've, they've cleaned it up, and they've made it usable, so it can be used for class, and then that level of work will be done in the summer.
Good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Both of you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Donations, oh, school administration update. So, we had, I had appointed Alexis Curry as the acting principal of Goodrich Academy, and I had asked you if I could have, if I could hire a mentor to come in and work with Alexis twice a week. Steve Mills, who's former superintendent of acting in Boxborough and a high school principal from Worcester, has been coming in two days a week for about four hours a day, really working with her on all the IQ stuff, not the EQ stuff, the emotional stuff, but the academic administrative stuff of being a principal, teacher evaluations, filling out forms, budget, all that kind of stuff. So, Cabinet met with him in January and asked him how things were going, very positive. Alexis has been very coachable, she has been a quick learner. She had a lot of ideas that, you know, she's now being able to look at and implement, and just really overall, it was very, very positive in terms of, and this is somebody with a, he was a superintendent, he was a high school principal, he knows what he's looking for. So, then, we met as a group with Alexis and shared that with her, shared, you know, some of our observations. And then, if you remember, I was looking to make this appointment in April. And right now, she has some part-time guidance help. Albert Mercado has been going there and helping part-time. But the hours haven't been the best, because he's working during the day, and he gets to go over there later. And in talking with her and Steve Mills, there's a lot that needs to be done to get things, end the school year, and get the new school year up and running. So, I thought, if I know that she's the right person and she's doing a good job, why wait? So, I met with her last week, I shared all of that with her, and I offered her a contract, so she has signed a contract for this year and two years, so a three-year contract as the principal of Goodrich Academy. And then I'm going to meet with her and Rowan Demanche, and we're going to look at that other position, the one that she's vacating, we never filled it, and look at, what should that position look like? It was a guidance counselor, but it's possible that we might make it into a student program support administrator, where she would get some of the skills for clinical guidance, but also get an administrator in the building. Because if you remember from some of the communications, there was concern that when she's out, when the principal's out, there's no administrator in the building, which is okay on the short term, but if somebody had to be out for a week or so, who's going to be the administrator in the building? So, we're going to be doing that. So, I'm very pleased with the work that she's done, I think she will be the right person for that job.
Yes.
I, I just want to concur my delight that Alexis Curry is stepping up, and Therapaz will be there this Thursday to talk to kids about taking care of animals. So, she's always been very welcoming. Anytime I've walked into Goodrich Academy, again, it's a, it's a calm and warm place, but they have very high standards in terms of the academics. So, I, and every kid I've ever talked to who's been there has felt appreciated, but also felt like they've been challenged. Their eyes sparkle in the way that, you know, you, you only see when, when people are really, you know, working, working to capacity. So, hooray for Alexis, hooray for Goodrich.
Questions? Okay, and now there are just some action items. So, the first one is to approve a recommendation to allow Memorial Middle School, the grade students, fifth grade students to travel to Nature's Classroom. The next one is a donation of $2,000 to promote school-wide attendance, school culture, unity, and student interest in activities, and that's from Sedexo Incorporated. Next is approve the donation of 5,232 of Christmas toys, clothing, hats, gloves for the Fitchburg Public Schools from Capes FSC LLC and Elite Construction and Design. The owners are Matt Funier, Dustin Goodale, and Scott Hobart, with the assistance of Mr. Bill McSheehy. I saw all of those things, it filled the downstairs conference room. Unbelievable amount of toys and goods and things that went out to our, our kids in Fitchburg from this group. Approve the donation of $3,000 for 30 new hurdles to be used for indoor track to keep them being the top-notch team that they are. And then support my, my recommendation to invest up to 8,000 in school choice funds to match the potential 8,000 Community Development Block Grant for Crocker Field Grandstand wall restoration. So, this is not the first time we do that, that Crocker Field or some other organization steps up and they look for a match and review school choice funds for that. And the most important one is, and this usually goes to the finance subcommittee, but we haven't had a meeting, so I'm bringing it to the full committee, and that is my recommendation to invest $143,790 of school choice funds for the purpose to acquire Chromebooks. $136,290 and the storage for them for all Fitchburg Public School eighth graders. And I, I really feel, when I see the difference that Chromebooks have made in the environment at Fitchburg High School, the work that they're doing, the access that it's giving them, I really felt that if we can start this in eighth grade, and then we can also open up dialogue between the Fitchburg High School teachers and the eighth-grade teachers by getting them all on, you know, on, on the Google platform. So, we have the money in school choice, and I really think that it's an investment, and I think it says something to our eighth graders that, you know, we're looking at them as the oldest students in middle school, and we're investing in them. I don't know if you have any questions?
Any questions? If the committee will, would so deem it appropriate, let's bundle 18-963 up through and including 18-969. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion.
Motion made.
Seconded.
Seconded to approve those action items. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is unanimous. No need for executive session. Do I hear a motion adjourned?
Motion adjourned.
Motion made, seconded, to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.